I'll call the pre-meeting for the August 19th. Is it the night? Yeah, it's the 20th, August 20th. Planning and zoning meeting to order. And with us here this evening, we've got, I'm Phil Markham, the chairman. We have Travis Nay, Sue Wilson, Ned Hacker, Lisa Mukavich. Jared Hall will be joining us shortly, I am told. We have Zach Smallwood. And Susan is here as well, Susan Nixon. And Bryant Farnsworth will join us when we get in our regular meeting, I'm sure. And let's, oh, Maren's here. I'm sorry, Maren. Sorry, sorry. Okay. And so with that, we'll, we'll get started. Scott Woodbury is excused this evening, the vice chairman. So he's, hopefully he's listening in somewhere to our, our webcast. On approval of minutes, did everybody have a chance to look at them? Any, any big concerns, questions, you know? I thought they looked fine. I didn't find any obvious errors. Ned? Wow, that's, that's awesome. All right. Excellent. Conflict of interest, everybody feels okay? Nothing to discuss right now? Okay, good. All right, findings of fact.
Sorry, Phil, I couldn't find my unmute button fast enough. I just had a quick question. I don't think it's conflict of interest, but I just wanted to make sure. On, which one is it? I am number five, Matthew Avenue, three lot subdivision. One of their conditions, it's condition five, I think, required that they get approval from Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District. My husband works for them. I'm not sure if he's part of the team.
He's, he's not, you know, if it were you and you were the one providing the approval, then that would be a problem, I think. But no, no, the secondary like that, and he, he probably doesn't even know about this.
Oh, he does. They sent an email. He's an engineer.
You haven't discussed it intimately and thoroughly and formed opinions previous to the meeting tonight?
No. And I haven't asked him if he gets, if he influences whether they say yes or no.
You know what, Lisa, I, I think you're good. So I trust your judgment.
I just wanted to check, make sure we're open about that.
Findings of, findings of fact, we have three of them. We've got Precision, Precise Plumbing and Heating, Black Diamond Auto Collision, and Peak Property Solutions. So they are, again, they all look fine. No, no errors that I, I could recall, so.
I've got that written up if you want.
Thank you, Sue. Yeah, that, that's great. Just jump in and make that. So, all right, let's move to the agenda then. As, as you all know, we did have two agenda items dropped this evening. Agenda items six and seven, dealing with that 5300 South. The shop's at 5300 South there, so that has been removed. Don't know if we'll see it again, so we will see. Our first agenda item, the conditional use for Mike and Wilma Egbert. Who will be presenting that this evening? You will, okay?
That is me. So yeah, this is a request from Michael and Wilma Egbert to construct and operate an accessory dwelling unit out of their home. It is, it's right there at 931 West Chester Brook Cove. Pretty straightforward. It's just an accessory dwelling unit in the basement. It meets all the requirements laid out in the accessory dwelling ordinance, the 17.78. So if you want, I can take questions on it. It's really straightforward.
Just any, any public comment, any neighbors or anything?
I have not received anything, and I don't think we've received anything in the planning commission comments.
Okay, you know, again, it's real straightforward. I think the way that you guys handle these now, it, it answers just about all the questions upfront. And we've had very little controversy with these as they've come up, so. Does anybody have any?
Sure. I have a question. So the, the attachments, the submittal, have a very nice rendering of the basement. So is it concern the city or anybody that they've got the basement all laid out? It can only be 1,000 square feet, right? To stay under the, the rules? And they left off 270 square foot storage space. Any kind of concern to anybody?
Plus those are typically. I feel a little concerned of the storage room. It's a finished room with a closet. It looks to me like a three bedroom. Maybe I'm not from Utah, and Utah would go in the honor system, and I should appreciate that.
And, and that is one of, so that storage room, I believe that they've talked to Susan, as you guys know, I'm in the, I'm not in the office. But when they came and submitted, from what I understand, that storage room would be locked and only accessible to them. That's typically how we've treated it in the past. That they can have parts of, you know, their basement used for themselves.
But we essentially take them at their word for that.
Exactly.
Both of the storage rooms are not part of the ADU. So there's the one that's the 150 square feet, and the other one that's 270. Both of those are not included with the ADU.
Yeah, I guess I'm just thinking, okay, when inspectors come through and they look at it all, and it all gets the thumbs up, it turns into a bedroom. So I don't care, even if it does. I mean, they're still governed by the number of people that they can have there, so.
I even think the honest people of Utah are being honest right now. But then six years down the line, or 10 years down the line, they're like, why can't I go in that bedroom? I'm like, sure you can, and it just eventually becomes a bedroom. Because we just forget why we closed it, you know?
Well, six years now, Lisa, you can deal with that, because I won't be here.
Anyway, it's, it's good. It's a good.
Okay, thank you.
There will be a representative representing the Egberts tonight, Terry Miller.
I mean, it's a storage room, and I'm not going to call him a liar or anything. It just, it's always a little bit interesting to see that.
So Susan, there, there are a group of neighbors that have an opinion about this?
Oh, no, no, no. The Egberts are elderly.
Oh, okay.
And so they are going to have a representative representing them. Terry Miller is, will be the one representing them. I think they're going to be online, but he will be doing, hopefully, the talking, so.
Yeah, that's, that's one thing that I will notice, that this is, this is an older couple that are doing this. And I think that they're really doing, you know, this for the reasons that, at least from my research, why we instituted the ADU ordinance in the first place was for this kind of thing. So I have complete faith in there. And they want to do things by the book. They, they said that a lot. That they just want to make sure they do everything by the book, so.
Sure, it's good. It's all great.
Okay, well, let's move on to the next one, then, a subdivision project. Project Matthew Avenue, three lot subdivision. And that's Zach.
That is me again, yes. So you will remember, we recently went through a rezoning here. Rezoned it from R18 to R16. So this is them coming forward to split off that third lot there and then sell them as, as developable lots. I believe we have a gentleman from Castlewood Homes representing this item tonight. So I have a feeling they're probably going to be building the homes, if I had to assume. I apologize, I don't know the answer on that one. But they have, the lots have been designed in such a way that meet all the standards in the R16 zone. So. Questions, comments, praise, concern?
Too early for praise. That will be in the motion to adjourn.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay, well, let's, let's move on then. We, as we said, we'll, we'll scrap items.
Let me go back a little bit here, Phil. So that was the one, we got this one comment from the ditch company, right?
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
And did you notice in the conditions that that is addressed in the condition?
And actually, if we could, Susan brought this to my attention. So the ditch company doesn't provide will serve letters. So if we can just re-tweak that condition to say that they must obtain approval from the ditch company, that's all that needs to be changed there. I just, I was in a mad dash of writing will serve letter, so.
Okay.
And you didn't get any other comments?
I have not received anything, no.
Yeah, I could see all of those services are, are outside of our normal jurisdiction. And so I, you know, we, we very seldom hear from any of those utilities. So I assume that things go well, but you know, we don't.
Very little cities, like mid, like in Midvale, when we do these, we never. We put in a, we put in a requirement, and that's it. Then you never hear from them.
Well, that's unfortunate, because, you know, it's, it's good for us to get a feel for, you know, how utilities and departments feel about this stuff.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, moving on, the general plan amendment and zoning map amendment has been removed from the agenda. I don't know if we'll see that again in the future. We'll have to see. So item number eight is an ordinance text amendment dealing, well, you're, you're basically abdicating all authority over bees to the health department, correct?
Yes, State Department of Agriculture and County Health, yes.
You'll be doing this one, Susan?
Yes, yes.
All right. Has there been any comment from anybody about this?
The only comment was, I've, I have spoken three or four times with the State Department of Agriculture and County Health. They have seen this draft. They are pleased with this draft, unlike.
It should be. It just hands it to them.
It's all to them, which is where, that's why we're doing it. Is there the experts? We're not. So yeah, they actually were pleased with the proposal and had no recommendations or changes or whatever, so.
Is, is anybody aware of, of neighbors that have bees? I'm not.
Yeah, actually, we, we, yes. What probably was catalyst for this, even though we've been meaning to do this for the past four years since it was adopted. There is an individual on Winchester who has bees, but is in the RNB zone, even though it's a single family dwelling. And they're not allowed in the RNB currently. And so he came in to propose a text amendment to allow it in the RNB. And we just said, you know what, we need to fix the code anyway. So let's do that first, and then go from there.
So he's already in a bee zone?
Well, that's true. You're right, yes. Just the wrong kind of bee.
Here, I have a, a change to the text.
Okay.
It's in the second line on the first page. Properties used as, take out the A. Properties used as single family detached homes are proposed. For, that's it. You just take out the A. And then it matches the same sentence down below.
I'm sorry, are you looking in the?
In the, in the.
Oh, in the actual, oh, oh.
The red line.
Oh, page one.
Okay.
Just take out the A in front of single family.
17 dot 65 dot 10110, purpose, second line, right?
Second line, yep.
You must have got an A in grammar, Ned.
Pardon me?
You must have done an A plus in grammar.
But I have another question. So I actually have two others. One is, should you, in, in A, in, in the applicability paragraph, just below that? Does it make any difference, Susan, to highlight what the UDOA ruling is that they should follow, like the R68-1, which is, was attached as a, an attachment? Or the same with the, the county ruling, Utah, whatever it is, and?
To refer to their specific code?
I guess so, just to make it clear.
A reference to the code that they have to follow?
I don't know if you do that other places in, in the city codes. And the other question I had, so one of the other attachments was, must have been the old application for a bee permit from the city. So do they have to do that anymore?
No. And that's, and that was.
So that just gets struck out, and they have to just apply straight to the?
Department of Agriculture.
UDOA.
Yes, exactly. So it takes all of the compliance and regulations off of us, who are not the experts who puts it to our should be. And, right, they would not apply with us, which.
So much for local control. Another battle lost.
You know, that's okay, as long as, if we knew what we were doing, right? But.
Now, let's do chickens.
Bring it on.
Wait until I retire, and then do chickens.
Right, yeah, I agree with that. You, me, Vulture, wow.
Yeah, that, I've got a neighbor that would like to show up and talk for a long time about that. And he doesn't have chickens.
Many people do.
I know, he knows that. Yes, many people around him do.
Hey, where are you guys? Are you used to beef farming chickens, though?
Yeah, yeah.
To Ned's, to Ned's question about using the, the reference, there are, there are instances when we do it, and I'm not, I just worry about missing, like if they change their code.
Yeah.
If we defer to them, and then they change their numbering, and it winds up being section R164 instead, and we're, we're misreferenced, I wouldn't want to do that necessarily. And I may never, I'm going to confess that I may never look at this again, once it's adopted.
Everything is so easy to find online.
Yeah.
It's going to be pretty obvious.
Yeah.
Once you look for it.
I think the intent is clear enough that I wouldn't suggest that we actually reference the specific sections that are applicable. I, I think we just leave it at their rules, if that's okay.
Okay, that's good.
Okay. All right. Does anybody else have anything that they want to discuss this evening? We've got a little bit of time.
Do you get any comments on the transportation plan?
Oh, that's a good question. The mass transportation plan is moving forward. I have a meeting next week. We have got some comments going on it, yeah. I've heard from, I forget his name, Robert over at Avenue. There's been some information come out that we've received a lot of comments, but I don't know how many. But so far, yeah, the response has been really good. I personally made all of my children respond to it, and all of their friends, so.
Good.
Shamed them on Instagram direct messaging, and I think they all responded, so. Just to get me off of my pedestal, my high horse, or whatever it was. But yeah, so far, so good. And it's, it's, Avenue's, I've been really, I've been really impressed with Avenue's kind of approach to the transportation plan.
They're good. We've hired them a number of times.
Yeah, yeah, I've liked them.
Jared, has there been any, any movement at all on that Bonneview School property, you know, where they were going to have to come up with a bunch of money for the sewer system?
Yeah, so they contacted us recently, a couple of weeks ago. It was, there hasn't been a lot of movement, no. They're, they're kind of sitting on their entitlement and waiting a little bit, but.
It's a lot of money.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's significant costs. But they're, they're still in there and looking at options to get it done. But it is expensive, so.
Trip lane down behind the junior high?
The, okay, that's a good, that's a good update. So the trip lane subdivision, I, I didn't know this until this morning, but they are on, NeighborWorks, the applicants are on the city council's committee, the whole agenda, this coming Tuesday night, to explain all of that issue about, you know, about using eminent domain and whether it would be appropriate here or not. So that first discussion will happen this coming Tuesday. And we'll see where they go from there. It's not scheduled after that for action or anything. They're just talking about it in committee of the hall.
Yeah, I think it's smart to fill out the council. If, if they all go pale white and say, oh my gosh, I can't imagine doing that, then, you know, why bother?
Yep, and so they're just, they're going to committee the hall, though. We, we made them ask the council to put them on the agenda, but we'll be there that night to, to kind of speak to the issue and hopefully help them understand, so.
Here, Cooper. My dog wanted to say hi, but she's just going to turn circles instead.
Is there an open date for Shake Shack yet?
I don't have one, no. I, I know that, I, I think they're probably, without a drive-through at that location, I'm going to go ahead and guess they're waiting out the COVID thing before they staff it and open it and start incurring expenses.
Which makes me sad, because I drive by it all, but.
Yeah, I don't have an open date, though, Sue, no, no, no idea.
Is there a groundbreaking date for City Hall?
I wish there were, but, you know, they're digging the road out and getting things realigned. And so I have hope, for the first time in the six years we've been talking about it, that it will happen, and.
What was the verdict on that road? Will it be two-way or one-way?
It'll be two-way. It'll be two-way. I'll be forever. I'll keep trying to keep it two-way forever.
The project on 900 East across from Walmart, the old Kmart lot, how's that coming?
Eos Fitness, is that?
No, 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 no. Van Winkle.
Oh, Van Winkle, sorry. Yep, coming, coming right along. The council looked at the memorandum of understanding, liked it. They'll probably adopt it next week. So once that's adopted, I would expect them to start digging sooner than later. They're, they're ready to move on it, so.
What happens to that cell tower there?
The cell tower on the City Hall site, or?
No, 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 on, on the Kmart property. They're just to the north of it, there's one there, in the storage unit.
I didn't know there was a cell tower in the city. Is it gone now? I, I don't know.
No, it's, it's there, but I just, I can't imagine that they're going to get good signal anywhere south, based on where the buildings will be placed.
Sure, I don't know. I, I don't know. I haven't looked at that at all.
Jared is now beginning to sweat profusely.
I'm ruining cell tower people's lives just left and right, everywhere I go.
Speaking of cell towers, how about movement of the cell tower on the, what is it, Applegate project?
That's funny you would mention that. So Susan, the other day, got contacted by them about, do you want to tell that story, Susan?
Oh, yeah. So they contacted us to say, basically, approval that they got for the expansion of a non-compartment use slash variance, to take it from where it is now to the old site, which is the stealth pole on the corner of 54th and 7th West. They was, that application was submitted by the property owners of the HOA and not from the cell tower entity themselves. And come to find out, if they move it back to that old location, it doesn't meet their technology, and it wouldn't get the service that they need, and would end up in a result of a gap in their service. So they wanted to know if they could reapply for variance for another location on the site. And so that probably wouldn't, probably wouldn't happen. They had a hard time getting the variance that they got. Anyway, so now they're going to go back to the HOA and try to figure out where they go from here, because where they got approved for isn't going to work for their service that they need.
I, I don't buy it. These companies are broadcasting signals to Jupiter. They can't tell me that moving at 50 feet, one direction or another, is really going to make that big a difference. I just don't buy it.
Hey, wait, aren't you the one that just said the buildings will block the reception? I don't know anything about.
That's the real thing.
The difference about those two sites, that Applegate, is there is a huge difference in grade, as far as the height. So that, you know, and if you think back to the old site, it's at a lower grade. So they lose eight to 10 feet in height, I guess. And that's the difference for their service, working for them or not.
But could they raise the tower? Is there a limit on how high they could go up, 10 more feet?
They have the maximum of 60 feet, so it can't be raised any higher.
So it's kind of, that'll be interesting to watch that play out and see how they deal with it. So far, they've been trying to deal with the individual issues that you guys all gave them as a, as a preliminary approval, and, and get a good, strong proposal to come back for final, because it's, you know, the preliminary was a success, but it was not a strong.
Right.
It was a mixed, it was, yeah, it, it was kind of a wake-up call for them to really get their ducks in a row. So they're trying, but it's hard to get all those ducks to line up on this project. It's a tough project.
So Jared, I, I mean, this also is exposing my ignorance, but my neighbors next door happen to be doing this at the moment. What would happen if they, and I don't know the property too, I can't picture the property where they're moving the antenna back to that's lower. But could they raise the property, regrade it, and gain 10 feet? Or what's the rules?
Raise it up there by the road? You mean for the cell tower, to, to get the signal better?
Yeah, if they didn't ask, if they started grading it a little bit?
I, you know, I suppose they could. They could, they could come to us with a proposal like that.
Don't give them ideas, Lisa. Don't give them ideas.
They, they probably could.
They would do it in a heartbeat.
With that, it just seems like a simple fix. You don't have to have to process again, don't have to beg to move it, don't have to scratch the project.
That, that might be something that they try. We haven't, we, we just came up the other day, what, two, three days ago, Susan? So they're, they're just barely looking at it now, trying to decide what to do.
So I'll end on a higher note, where I'm going to have fun the next couple of meetings, because I have Fashion Place West coming before you guys for the last time. And the MCCD Design Guideline rewrite coming up soon, too. So it should be a very fun September and October.
Do good projects.
Yeah.
Except you just canceled the September 3rd meeting.
I did. Well, Susan canceled it.
Susan did it.
Well, we could have had a meeting that would have been, that would accomplish nothing.
Yeah.
Would have been a lot of talk, but.
Yeah.
All right, well, you know what, I'm, I'm going to close the pre-meeting, give everybody a chance if you need to get a drink or whatever, and then we'll reconvene at 6:30, okay?
Okay.
All right, we're closed. Thanks. It's, it's 6:30, so we'll, we'll get started. I'd like to welcome everybody that is viewing online to the August 20th, 2020 meeting of the planning, Murray City Planning and Zoning Commission. I would like to read this statement concerning the Open Meetings Act prior to our, our meeting starting tonight. So give me, give me a few minutes here. Public notice is hereby given that in accordance with Executive Order 2020-5, suspending the enforcement of provisions of Utah Code 52-4-202 and 52-4-207 due to infectious disease COVID-19 novel coronavirus issued by Governor Herbert on March 18th, 2020, and emergency executive order 20-02 issued by the mayor on April 1st, 2020. The Planning Commission of Murray City, Utah, will hold an electronic-only regular meeting at 6:30 PM Thursday, August 20th, 2020. The Chair of the Murray City Planning Commission has determined that due to the continued rise of COVID-19 counts, meeting with an anchor location presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those in attendance. No physical meeting location will be available. The public may view the meeting via the live stream at www.murraycitylive.com. If you would like to submit comments for an agenda item, you may do so by sending an email, including your name and contact information in advance of or during the meeting, to planningcommission@murray.utah.gov. Comments are limited to three minutes or less, and will be read into the meeting record. So with that, I would like to introduce the folks that are here this evening. I'm Phil Markham. I'm the Chair of the Planning Commission. We have with us Commissioner Travis Nay, Sue Wilson, Ned Hacker, Lisa Mukavich, and Maren Patterson. Jared Hall from staff is here, Zach Smallwood from staff, and Susan Nixon from staff as well. And we are joined by Bryant Farnsworth from the Attorney's Office. So with that, I would like to mention one thing, so it could possibly save some people some time just sticking around this evening if they're not up to date. We did have two agenda items pulled from the agenda yesterday, I believe. The general plan amendment and the zone map amendment, dealing with Howland Partners Incorporated at 5157, 5177, 5217, and 5283 South State, and 151 East, 5300 South State. That's been pulled, and I don't have. And I don't have any more information on that, if it will be agended again in the future. Um, really, we have, we have no information. So with that, we'll, uh, we'll start to, we'll, we'll take care of a couple of business items here. Um, first of all, we have approval of minutes for the August sixth Planning and Zoning Meeting. As everyone had a chance to, um, uh, see those minutes, um, any comments, questions, corrections? And if not, I will be happy to entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from as they are, they are presented in, uh, sorry. Was that the July sixteenth meeting?
No, it is the August sixth, August sixth.
Oh, yes. Yeah, I'm sorry. Caught me off.
Susan, you're fine.
The August sixth, twenty twenty Planning Commission meeting.
Yes. Okay.
As written.
Do I have a second?
One second, Pat.
Okay, Lisa. All right, I have a motion by Sue Wilson, a second by Lisa Mokavich. Those in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. All right, conflict of interest this evening. Does anyone have a, uh, a conflict of interest with any of the, uh, items on the agenda?
No.
No. No? All right, great. No conflicts of interest. And finally, um, in our business items, we have approval of finding of fact. We have three findings of fact this evening. We have, uh, before us, uh, Precision Plumbing and Heating, Black Diamond Auto Collision LLC, and Peak Property Solutions. Uh, everyone had a chance to look at those, and if there are any questions, comments, or corrections, I'd like to hear them at this time. Okay, I'm open for a motion with that as well.
Hey, Mr. Chair, uh, since I did such a good job on the last one, sorry about that. I'd like to make a motion to approve the findings of fact for a conditional use permit to allow a plumbing and heating contracting business in the MG zone for precise plumbing and heating at forty-one ninety-five South Fifth West, space number twenty. A motion to approve, a motion to approve a conditional use permit to allow the operation of an auto sales business at the subject property located at forty-one ninety-five South Fifth West, number ninety-eight. Now, and a motion to approve a conditional use permit for Peak Property Solutions Incorporated to allow the operation of a property management contracting business and storage on the property located at forty-six nineteen Cherry Street.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ned. I have a motion by Sue Wilson, a second by Ned Hacker to approve the findings of fact as presented to us this evening for those three businesses. Those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's great. That passes unanimously. All right, we'll move to our agenda items. And the first item is a conditional use permit for Mike and Wilma Egbert at nine thirty-one West Chesterbrook Cove for an accessory dwelling unit in their, in their house. And Zach will be presenting that to us this evening. Is the applicant or a representative of the applicant present tonight?
Yeah.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, great. We'll, we'll give you a chance to, uh, make comment and add, uh, provide any additional information after, uh, we get a presentation from our, uh, our staff. Thank you. Okay, Zach, it's yours.
All right. Thank you very much. Let me make sure I get on the right thing here. Can you all see my screen?
Yes.
Yeah.
Perfect. So this is a request from, uh, Mike and Wilma Egbert to uh, construct and operate an accessory dwelling unit at the address nine thirty-one West Chesterbrook Cove, wow, Chesterbrook Cove. Um, you can see here on the screen, uh, it's located in that red box. Uh, it is a single-family home. It is in the Arwen Eaton Zone, which accessory dwelling units are allowed in the, uh, any single-family residential, uh, zone subject to a conditional use permit. Here is a site plan, uh, that they have provided. You can see the, uh, parking up here on, uh, the top of your screen at about thirty-six feet wide. Uh, that, that provides, uh, this, the reason I bring that up is because the applicant is, does have to provide two additional, um, off-street parking stalls as part of an accessory dwelling unit. And they do show that they have more than enough parking. They have that entire driveway, and then they also have this twelve-foot separation as well. Um, these lines here, these black lines represent where property lines would be. However, uh, ma- mapping software, when you try to put straight lines on a curved surface like the earth is, um, even though some people still believe we have flat earth, um, it's, it creates a little skew there. So that line is shifted a little bit, and there is approximately twelve feet there. You can also see, uh, more towards the, uh, bottom of the picture is the basement entrance as well. They are proposing a, an eight hundred and twenty-five square foot accessory dwelling unit. Uh, they are allowed to go up to forty percent or a thousand square feet. So they are, are well within that percentage there with this hun- eight hundred and twenty-five square feet. I believe the entire home is three thousand square feet. And, and they do meet that as well. I do want to call out that this storage room here, uh, the hundred and fifty square foot storage room and the two hundred and seventy square foot storage area, those, uh, the applicant has stated will be for, uh, their personal use and will not be used by any, uh, uh, anyone using the accessory dwelling unit. A couple photos here for you that I took today. Looks like they're replacing their driveway there. Uh, and you can see, uh, the basement is kind of located here, and then I didn't feel comfortable going in their backyard without permission and with COVID and everything. I didn't want to go and cause unnecessary contact there. So there's a small photo of the back from what I can see from the back backyard as well. Staff is recommending that you, that the Planning Commission approve a conditional use permit for the accessory dwelling unit. These, uh, are pretty self-explanatory. Uh, these, the same thirteen conditions that we apply to almost every accessory dwelling unit. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions or, um, comments from the sta- from the commission if they have any.
Questions or comments? Pretty straightforward. And, and as I said in the pre-meeting, Zach, I, I really, I like the way uh, we have this, uh, this ordinance structured. I think it puts a lot of the, the things that, they're taken care of prior to this coming to us. And, uh, I think you guys do a good job of explaining it to the applicants. And so, uh, you know, the reason that we don't have a lot of questions is this has actually become kind of routine as long as, uh, all of the, uh, conditions are met. So
Yep.
With, with that, um, I would invite the, uh, the applicant or, um, representative of the applicant to, uh, to join the meeting and state your name and address for the record and provide any additional information that you would like us to have.
Okay, uh, this is Terry Miller. I'm a personal representative for the Egberts, who I'm with, of course, tonight. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. Uh, at this point, all the paperwork that we've received, and again, it's, I can see why it is routine. Uh, you make it clear what will be required, you know, in the future as far as, uh, what the uh, requirements are going forward for an ABU. So at this point, uh, to us, it's very clear as to what, uh, we're reading and where we need to go from here.
And, and you will be able to comply with the thirteen conditions as outlined in the, uh, the, the permission.
Right, and let's see, what, those thirteen?
Yes.
Were, were they in our packet that was sent to us?
Yes, they should be.
Okay, are they numbered one through thirteen?
Yes, they are.
Oh, I got them. No problem, no problem. We've got.
Okay, great. All right, well, um, seeing as they don't have any additional, uh, information to provide to us at this time, we'll, uh, we'll open this item up for public comment and see if we receive any, uh, email comments concerning this agenda item. We did not receive any prior to the meeting tonight. So we have nothing to read into the record, uh, beforehand. So we'll take a couple of minutes and see if we get some activity. And anything that we receive, we will read into the record and then, uh, come back up. Thanks. Susan, any activity thus far?
There are no, no comments.
Okay. Well, I, I feel comfortable, uh, at this point with closing the public comment portion of this, uh, a, agenda item. And, um, with that, uh, bringing it back up for additional discussion by the commission or, uh, a, a motion if anyone sees, uh, beneath.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Could I move that we as a planning commission approve a conditional or make a motion that we as a planning commission approve a conditional use permit to allow the construction and or operation of accessory dwelling unit at the property address nine three-one West, West, Westerbrook? Cove, Chesterbrook Cove.
There you go.
Subject to, um, conditions one through thirteen as read, well, as written in the report.
Excellent.
I'll second.
All right. I have a motion by Lisa Mokavich, a second by Maren Patterson, that the Planning Commission approve a conditional use permit to allow the construction and or operation of an accessory dwelling unit at the property addressed nine thirty-one West Chesterbrook Cove, subject to conditions one through thirteen as presented this evening. Please call for a vote.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Mokavich?
Yes.
Commissioner Patterson?
Yeah.
Commissioner Nay?
Yeah.
Commissioner Hacker?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
And Chairman Markham?
Yes. Good luck with, uh, your project, uh, uh, for the Egberts, and, uh, we hope that it, uh, it, it does everything that you want it to, to, to help you to stay there. So thank you. And with that, we will move on to the next agenda item. Agenda item number five is Preliminary and Final Subdivision Approval for Castlewood Development. And it is.
I actually have a request, Chair.
Yes.
We are still waiting for Mr. Rasmussen, who will be representing the item. So I would ask if we could, um, I know that Susan was talking to him just a moment ago, and he said that he's going into his office to log into Zoom there. So if we could move on to the beekeeping ordinance, um, if that's okay with the commission?
Um, as long as there's no objection from other members of the commission, I'm fine with that. All right, we'll, we'll do that. We will change the, uh, the order, and we will move to agenda item number eight and revisit number five in a few minutes, hopefully. This, this is a, uh, an ordinance text amendment, a land use ordinance text amendment for modifications to section seventeen point six five Beekeeping Standards. And Susan gets to present this to us this evening.
Yes, and I will try to share my screen if I could. I'm hoping.
Okay, yep, I've got it, Susan.
Have you got it? Okay.
Uh-huh.
Perfect, thank you. Oh, oops.
That was, that was the quickest presentation we've had yet.
Okay, excuse me. Thanks. Um, okay, this application is been initiated by our Department of Community and Economic Development Division. Um, and it is for a text amendment to our current regulations of Title seventeen, Doc sixty-five Beekeeping Standards. The land use, uh, number eighty-one fifty-six for apiaries is currently allowed in our residential single-family zones and the A-one zone only. This proposal is to include all properties used as single-family detached homes regardless of the zoning. Um, when we adopted this code four years ago, shortly thereafter, we realized that our code was too stringent and very difficult for citizens to meet. And so we finally got to, around to changing the code or proposing a change. Um, and this is to, uh, streamline it and put the regulations and compliance shift that to the Department of Agriculture and the state, uh, Salt Lake County Health Department, who are the experts. And so, um, this proposal would again shift that responsibility to the Department of Ag where they have um, their Utah Inspection Act, and I'm gonna just go over their, highlight their regulations in, um, and then also the Salt Lake County regulations also. So the main proposal for this is to allow it to go into all zones as long as it is occupied or used, properties used as a single-family detached home. And meet, register with the Department of Agriculture and meet the Salt Lake County Health Department regulations. And the one, um, regulation would be that minimum lot size would determine how many hives that an individual beekeeper could have. The Department of Ag, um, Inspection Act highlights are that the person not raised bees, a person may not raise bees in the state without being registered with the Department of Ag. Each apiary location shall be identified by a sign showing the owner's registration number issued by the Utah Department of Ag unless the apiary is located on property owned by the beekeeper. The county bee inspector or the department may inspect all apiaries within the county at least once a year and immediately any apiary within the county that is alleged in a complaint to be severely diseased, parasitized, or abandoned. And then upon the inspection, the apiary, if, um, if the apiary is diseased or parasit- par- parasitized or abandoned, the inspector may prescribe the course of treatment based on the severity of the disease or parasite present. And then may, or may take immediate possession of the afflicted colony or destroy the afflicted bees if necessary. If the owner of an apiary who is dis- dissatisfied with the diagnosis or course of action proposed by an inspector under this section, may at the owner's expense have the department examine the alleged diseased bees. And then the last, um, highlight would be that a beekeeper may not intentionally maintain an aggressive or unmanageable stock, whether African or European. Um, I spoke with the state, um, Department of Ag today, their representative, and he, and I gave him a copy of this recommendation with um, our staff report, and he had distributed amongst his colleagues. And they all were in favor of this proposed amendment and thought it was much better than what we currently have. I also spoke with Salt Lake County, um, representatives who concurred with that. Um, so that's the highlights for the state Department of Ag. The county health department requirements are, and I'll try to briefly go over this, is it shall be unlawful for any person to maintain or locate, if we have an, on any property in a way that threatens public health or safety or creates a nuisance in a residential area, an apiary is not to exceed three stacks or five boxes each or an equivalent capacity. Now, having read just that paragraph, I need to say that, um, the county is proposing they would like to strike out or modify that last sentence saying where it says that in, they may not exceed three stacks or five boxes each. Apparently that is obsolete and that based on what they have said, that does really nothing. So they are going to change that, but, um, just to be aware of. Then the other, um, regulation is a hive shall be placed on property. So the general flight pattern of bees is in the direction that will deter bee contact with humans or domesticated animals on the adjacent property or areas of public access. And then a hive shall be supplied with adequate, adequate accessible freshwater continuously between March first and October thirty-first each year. The water shall be in a location minimizing the nuisance created by bees seeking water on neighboring property. A hive shall be located so the bee's flight pattern is six feet or more above frequent, frequently used areas of public access. And then lastly, a person shall not locate or allow a hive on property owned or occupied by another person without first obtaining written permission from the owner or occupant. So those would be the, um, Department of Ag and Salt Lake County Health. And then in addition to that, our code would allow apiaries, hives, um, certain number of them based on the size of the lot. And again, this is for all zones where there is a single-family detached dwelling. And we have lowered the minimum lot size down to four thousand square feet. So from four thousand to eight thousand square feet, someone could have up to two hives. And then on the. on a scale, nine thousand could have three, ten thousand square feet would have four, eleven thousand would have five, and twelve thousand would have six hives. The state Department of Ag actually felt this was really good to have a maximum of six hives for a city of our size and average-sized lots. So, based on that input from the state and county and shifting the responsibility for compliance and basically regulating, it, staff is proposing a approval for the modified text amendment, subject to meeting the Department of Agriculture and Salt Lake County Health Departments, and also for all properties used as single-family detached homes. And then with the limitation on the number of hives based on the size of the lot. Any questions? That's a very brief, fast overview.
I, yeah, I've just got a couple, Susan. The, the county and the state, then, they're, they're perfectly fine with the compatibility of their regulations as they relate to each other. There's no conflicts, no, no problem in that area?
No, I, as far as I know, there's not. They both, like I said, I sent a copy to both entities to the, a few days ago and heard back from both of them. They were okay with what we had proposed.
Okay.
It, the, this inspections department actually falls under the county, county has-
That was my next question was enforcement. How, how is that handled?
Enforcement is, good question. The enforcement would be done by the county. We have a designated inspector for Salt Lake County. He does inspections on Sunday, Monday, Tuesday. And you can email and, and call him, I guess, anytime, but he basically works Sunday, Monday, Tuesday. So, they would be the enforcement of it. But I think, you know, and, and as a suggestion, we might want to say in our code, if, if one regulation conflicts with the other, that we go with the more restrictive of the code. You know, that could be kind of a safety catch, I guess.
Yeah, I, I didn't see any obvious conflict, but I, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, both agencies were, were okay with the compatibility of their codes.
Susan, can I ask you another question about enforcement?
Sure.
It's just, exposing my ignorance, but enforcement, it states in there the yearly reviews and what could, the actions could be. But is there also as, aspects of enforcement where someone in the community that had a concern could, can talk to somebody? Is that, how does that work?
Yes, actually, the, there is a, through the county, you can go online and submit a complaint, I guess. And then that's when it is investigated by the inspector from the county. So, if someone was concerned about it, like if the bees were, you know, bees buzzing everywhere, whatever, then the county inspector would respond to that complaint or question, inquiry, whichever, where the experts were not. And or they could also probably call the Department of Ag. But the actual inspection and enforcement is done through the county.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Ned, in pre-meeting, you had a, you had a comment on some of the, the text.
Right. I didn't, I recommended that one letter be taken out of the text on the second line of the proposed text, just to, to make it more grammatically correct.
Okay. So, just, just a procedural thing. We don't need to really address that. Okay. All right.
Read that paragraph, you know, for those, for those who aren't pretty to our staff report, for anybody-
Would you like me to read it, read it, or you, Susan?
Either or, whichever. I'm happy to do it.
Then I'll, I'll defer to you. It's your presentation right now.
Okay. So, the section I believe that Ned was questioning, the verbiage, it's just under the purpose, which is titled seventeen dot sixty-five dot oh one oh. The purpose of this chapter is to enable the keeping of bees on single-family detached homes for purposes of family food production. This chapter is intended to facilitate residential agricultural purposes while preserving the health of both humans and bees, minimizing nuisances to neighboring property owners.
Okay.
That was it. Is that right, Ned?
Yes.
Okay. Well, unless anyone has any additional comments, I'd like to take a minute and open public comment period for this, give people a chance to send us some emails and make any comment that they wish. So, with that, we'll, we'll take a short amount of time and see if we get some activity.
While we're, while we're waiting, I just maybe could add that with this proposal, the citizens of Murray would no longer need to apply through the city for a, for bee, a bee license, basically. So, it kind of streams lines, streamlines process. And, and again, it puts, puts the enforcement and compliance with the experts, with the state and county rather than city. And we do not have any input or comments from-
All right. Well, with that, I will close the public comment portion of this agenda item and bring it back up to the commission for any comments, questions, or action.
I'd like to make a motion that the planning commission forward a recommendation of approval to the city council to amend title seventeen point six-five as attached to this report, extending to all properties used as single-family detached homes, subject to registration with Utah Department of Agriculture and following Salt Lake County Health Department requirements.
Okay. I have a motion by Maren. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. And I have a motion by Maren Patterson, a, a second by Travis Nay, that the planning commission forward a recommendation of approval to the city council to amend title seventeen point six-five as attached to this report, extending to all properties used as single-family detached homes, subject to registration with the Utah Department of Agriculture and following Salt Lake County Health Department requirements. Please call for a vote.
Uh, Mr. Nay?
Yeah.
Ms. Mokavich?
Yes.
Ms. Patterson?
Yeah.
Mr. Hacker?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
And Mr. Markham?
Yes. All right. So, that passes unanimously. And now, we will, we will move back in time to agenda item number five and visit the preliminary and final subdivision approval for Matthew Avenue three-lot subdivision located at sixty-four fifty and sixty-four sixty-eight South thirteen hundred East. It's a three-lot subdivision, and Zach will be presenting to us.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Markham. Yeah, as you had stated, this is a, Matthew, this is a request for preliminary and final subdivision approval at sixty-four fifty and sixty-four sixty-eight South thirteen hundred East. And now it doesn't want to, there we go. All right. So, currently, these are two properties. The, the owner would like to subdivide this into three properties. You'll remember a few months back, we, you had forwarded a recommendation of approval to the city council to, to amend the code from R one eight to R one six, which is a six thousand square foot lot minimum from an eight thousand square foot lot minimum. The, the, excuse me, the city council approved that, and that was completed. We haven't updated it in our maps, though. So, right here, it shows R one eight, but that is an R one six. All right. So, here you go. This is the layout of the three properties that are proposed. You have the one on the furthest west, a middle one, and then one that fronts, is a corner lot on Matthew Avenue in thirteen hundred east. Pretty straightforward, single-family subdivision. These all meet the minimum lot size requirements of at least six thousand square feet and also the frontage requirements. Here on this, on this slide here, you can see the inner ring is the setbacks proposed. And the outer ring, I believe, are public utility easements, but we usually don't have those on the front. So, they'll be working with engineering as they continue to go forward. Those will probably amend, be amended and played with as they go forward. Utilities will be provided through various different divisions. This is not through Murray City's utilities such as power or water and sewer. They are through Jordan Valley Water Conservancy, Cottonwood Improvement District, and Rocky Mountain Power. So, those would be providing, or be provided. And engineering, I believe, is requiring will-serve letters for those. Also, we did get a public comment in from Max Reese with, with the ditch company. I apologize. I think it's Tanner Ditch.
Tanner Ditch, yes.
And located right here, this, this really bright blue line, there is a, a ditch line there. So, they do have to obtain permission from, or approval through them as well. Grading and drainage, not a lot's going to be changed. There are two existing homes here that are going to be demolished in this process. So, it is fairly level already. A couple side photos for you that I took today. It's, can see, it's kind of roughed up a little bit over some time and neglect, unfortunately. And one thing that I did have a comment on is over here, I think you can see it on my screen. Can you see the sidewalk over on this side here?
Maybe not really.
Okay. Well, they need to line up that sidewalk with what's required. I believe on the plans, they showed a different size, but that'll be taken care of prior to the plat being recorded. And I believe it's a condition on there as well. Okay. So, staff is recommending that the planning commission approve the preliminary and final subdivision for the Matthew Avenue three-lot subdivision, subject to the seven conditions in, in your staff report and on screen. Any questions for me at this point?
Zach, we've not received really any, any comment positive or negative from the utility companies involved?
I have not received anything, no. The only thing we received was from Max Reese saying that they would need to work with the ditch company.
Okay.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
I have one question. Can we just clarify, on thirteen feet, there is no additional park strip being placed, correct? It's going to be the current configuration with the sidewalk?
From what I understand, that is correct, yes. So, this is going to be sidewalk here. No, no park strip there. And typically, we allow for that. The, the engineer, Trey, does have the authority in our subdivision ordinance to allow them to forego a park strip there.
Well, you've got some big tower poles there that kind of make that difficult anyways, so.
Yeah.
Well, and to be very honest with you, the park strips, the way that we traditionally see them in this, in this state, they're not really very useful, to be very honest with you. They're, they're just a waste of water and, and work. So.
Yeah, we, we spent a lot of time walking that stretch. And, you know, just having an extra three or four feet would, would make that stretch more comfortable to walk. But I, there's clear barriers to that happening.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for staff? Okay. Well, is the, is the applicant present this evening?
I am, Mr. Chairman, Dwayne Rasmussen, representing Castlewood Development. Can you hear me?
Sure can. So, good to hear from you again, Mr. Rasmussen.
My apologies for being late. For some reason or other, I couldn't get this on my phone and the best-laid plans. So.
You're, you're just fine. It's, it's, it's a rather, what, light agenda this evening. So, it didn't inconvenience anyone.
Thank you for your tolerance. Appreciate it.
Do you, do you have any additional information you'd like to, to give us this evening?
Just a couple of comments regarding what has been said. Our engineering company has been in touch with all of the utilities that will need to service this. We're in the process of getting will-serve letters, which will be required by your engineering department. He's worked very closely with Trey in, in arriving at this configuration of this plat. And I think we're, and we've also talked to Tanner Ditch. They just want to make sure that we make some changes in the head gate, which we will do.
Right.
I'd like to be notified when that happens. So, I think we're in pretty good shape. If you have any other questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Just really, the main one for me is that you can comply with the seven conditions that are identified in the presentation.
Indeed, we can.
Okay. That's all I had. Other members of the commission, any questions or comments? Okay. Pretty straightforward. And I, I, it does look like it will be an improvement on the area. So, with that, we'll, we'll open this agenda item up for public comment. And we'll take a couple of minutes to give folks a chance to submit any emails. We have not had any prior to the meeting. Is that correct, Zach?
I have not received anything.
All right. Well, with that, we'll open public comment now for a period.
Can I ask a question while we're waiting? It really just pertains to the property as it is today. There's a beautiful wrought iron fence on there. Are they going to salvage that or scrap it?
Mine. I'm just kidding.
I would think someone wants it.
Well, we'll probably, we'll, we'll salvage it, but not in use at this subdivision.
Yeah, yeah. Perfect. Thanks.
Zach, any, any activity? Susan, anything coming in?
None.
Not a thing.
All right. Well, with that, I will close the public comment portion of this agenda item and bring it back up to the commission for any questions, comments, or action.
Mr. Chairman, I make motion, I make motion that the planning commission grant preliminary and final subdivision approval for the Matthew Avenue three-lot subdivision on the properties addressed sixty-four fifty and sixty-four eighty-six South thirteen hundred east, subject to conditions one through the long list, the thirteen, seven.
Sixty-four, sixty-eight, sixty-four, sixty-eight. Yes.
Sixty-four, sixty-eight.
Yes. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
All right. I have a motion by Ned Hacker, a second by Lisa Mokavich, that the planning commission grant preliminary and final subdivision approval for the Matthew Avenue three-lot subdivision on the properties addressed sixty-four fifty and sixty-four sixty-eight South thirteen hundred east, subject to seven conditions in our application this evening. Please call for a vote.
Hey, Commissioner Hacker?
Yeah. Same question, I think.
What?
Wait, what? Do we need to change that wording, Mr. Smallwood? Or are we okay?
Don't worry.
Well, he mentioned earlier that-
Yeah. I think it, I think it'll be okay. I, I mean, I believe it's already done anyway. They've already received their, their work. So, I think it's okay at this point to leave it as is.
Okay.
All right. So, now, Commissioner Haker?
Yes.
Commissioner Mokavich?
Yes.
Commissioner Nay?
Yeah.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Commissioner Patterson?
Yeah.
And Chairman Markham?
Yes. Motion's passed unanimously. Good luck with your project, Mr. Rasmussen. We'll look forward to the next time we see you at our meeting.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I enjoy working in Murray. Have a nice evening.
Take care. All right. With that, that concludes our agenda for this evening. Are there any other business items that staff wants to bring to our attention?
Unless Jared has anything.
Um, nothing really that we didn't discuss in the, in the-
Um, nothing really that we didn't discuss in the, in the pre-meeting, so I think, I think we're, we're covered.
Our next, our next meeting has, has been canceled.
Canceled.
So, the next time we will be in session is September?
Seventeenth, I believe.
Seventeenth, okay.
So we already have items for that, so plan on the seventeenth will be-
Okay, we should, we shall do that, I will-
Give you a night off, we're gonna load you up.
Okay, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
There you go.
Sorry, had to turn my mic on.
We, we are, we are adjourned, thank you.
Everybody.
Thanks for being here, everybody.
Thank you, have a-
Stay out of the heat.
Have a great week, everybody.
Yep.